We'll call to order the Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session for tonight, which is Thursday, January the 4th, 2024. We have already had our invocation that was done by Ms. Emily Hardaway, our Community Outreach Coordinator for the City of Douglasville. And the Mayor Pro Tem has led us in the Pledge Allegiance in our last special call meeting that started at 5:00. So we'll move on. I'll do the protocol for the preliminary information to give you for how the meetings will run this evening, and then we'll get into the body of the meeting. I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session. This is a work session. My name's Rochelle Robinson. I'm Mayor of the City of Douglasville. This is a work session where agenda items will be handled just for discussion this evening. We will not take action on these items until next Monday at our voting meeting, our regular voting meeting. So if the information that you'd like to discuss, if an agenda item is not being handled this evening, you will have an opportunity to come forward for comments from citizens and delegations for you to discuss your business. I'd like to welcome you to the meeting. The business here for is not listed as agenda item. Again, there will be ample time under the agenda item comments from citizens and delegates for you to discuss your business. I ask that you please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the Chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. If you receive a warning from the Chair and you deviate from that warning, a second deviation will result in us discontinuing your conversation by turning the microphone off. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not applaud or react to speakers. Speak from the audience, cheer, or carry on a conversation when you're at the podium. We ask that you would address all of your comments, concerns, and questions to the committee chair. We're only required to accept public comments during required public hearings. And if you have a cellphone or electronic device, I ask that you would please put those in silent mode or turn those off until after the meeting so they will not be disruptive. Now, this is how the agenda items will be handled. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item, then that person or representative of that agenda item will come forward. The applicant will make a presentation. Myself and council members will possibly ask clarifying questions to help us make our decision on next Monday when we have our voting meeting. After that, the committee chairperson will ask for comments or statements from the audience. There is a maximum of 20 minutes for those in favor of the item and 20 minutes for those in opposition, and each person has five minutes to speak. If you have more than four or five people, you can split your time up for three minutes. But in totality, you have 20 minutes for the applicant and 20 minutes for the applicant or the persons that are in opposition of that particular item. Each person has one opportunity to speak, and there are speaker cards if you'd like to talk about a certain item. They're out on the desk. They're blue cards. We ask that you would please fill those cards out with your name and address, bring that forward, and hand it to our city clerk, Ms. Vicki Acker, who's to my right in the gray blazer, and she'll be happy to put your name and address in the record. This is not a question-and-answer format or debate. We're just here to hear the information, deliberate, and make our decisions on Monday. Please give any printed materials to our city clerk, Ms. Acker, and she will make copies and disseminate it to myself and council members. That's a whole lot of talking, just trying to give everyone the protocol on how the meeting will be handled. We do have paper agendas that are outside on the desk if you'd like to have a paper one, but if not, you can certainly follow us on the screen above me. So now we will move on, and we will go through each committee, and if that committee has business, they will bring that business to the floor and we'll have our discussion. If not, we'll keep moving through the agenda topics until we're completed with the meeting. So now those are all the announcements and presentations. Our first committee is Economic Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem, elected again for 2024, City Councilmember Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Economic Development Committee at this time.
Thank you, sir. Our Finance Committee chaired by, that was formerly the Vice Chair, but now is the Chair, Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in Finance.
Thank you, sir. Housing and Community Affairs Committee chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Housing and Community Affairs Committee this evening.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee, the new Chair is Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem, Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item under the Legislative Intergovernment Committee at this time.
Yes.
That is to hold a public hearing regarding the consideration of a resolution to provide for a waiver of the requirements for a city logo on the mayor's work vehicle for calendar year 2024. Ms. Hampton, I think you have a little bit of background on this?
Yes, sir. At the beginning, I should say the end of last year, you all discussed the mayor's request to have the logo waived for the city vehicle. At that time, we did not hold a public hearing. We were required to, so after that meeting, we went ahead and advertised for the public hearing just to have that. I do know that the mayor had some comments, excuse me, about that and the logo and the vehicle. She does have the vehicle. There is a logo on it now, but I will turn it over to the mayor for any comments that she may have.
Thank you so much, City Manager. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the City Manager stated, we do, I did pick up the car on the 1st of January, and the logo is on the car. It is not intrusive, so either way, it does not matter. It feels up to the pleasure of the council whether the logo will stay or be waived. In the past, we did waive the logo for mayors, and just in recent years, we've had the logo on the car. The City Manager has the dimensions, and Mr. Roberts, our Public Works Director, did place a logo on the car. There is a license plate that says Douglas County Government, so it is recognized as a car. And the reason why I wanted the logo waived is because, just in the climate now, political climate, I felt uncomfortable as a woman driving all over the state or wherever with the logo on. I felt like a sitting duck a little bit. And as the chief knows, I've reported before that I have donuts in my driveway, in my grass, someone knocked over my mailbox. I had threats when we had protests, marches in the city, death threats before where he had to go and talk to someone. So it's just a little uncomfortable sometimes to have that identification on the car because just the way the political climate is now. But again, it's on the car now. It does not matter. It's up to the council's pleasure or whatever you all decide. I am fine with this. The taxpayers' dollars and it's their car that I drive to serve the citizens, and it's something that's been provided for mayors as long as I can remember having a vehicle for the city. So those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Since we are required to hold a public hearing at this time, then before we begin discussion on council, I will open the floor to the audience. This is a public hearing. The mayor at the beginning of the meeting explained the ground rules for a public hearing, so the amount of time and the usage of your time. So I will open the microphone to anyone who would like to come down to speak, either in favor or against this proposal. Well, as our illustrious Mr. Davis says, "There are no takers." So I will close the public hearing at this time, and I will open up the discussion to the rest of the city council if anybody went to make a comment or discuss pros or cons.
Yes.
Ms. Danley, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I'd like to make a comment. Excuse me. Madam Mayor, thank you for being humble in your words of saying it doesn't matter, but it does matter. Your safety matters to me and I'm sure to our citizens, so your desire to have it waived and considering if there have been death threats, and I do understand the climate right now is iffy and may get worse, so I am in favor of this waiver. Thank you.
Councilwoman Estes.
I will echo Councilwoman Berta Danley's comments. It's a sad commentary that something like this is even necessary, but, you know, the state of the world and society these days, I understand. As a white man, it's hard for me to fully appreciate, but I believe that those concerns are true and real, and so I support this as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments, Councilwoman Miller?
Thank you. I appreciate you, Madam Mayor, for coming to us and talking to us about this, and I completely understand and respect that there is an ordinance around it because at a previous time, the council felt that it was necessary. It's sad to know that we are in a different climate now, and I hate the thought that you even have to worry about something such as this. I know that we've already discussed it to the degree that it can be as small as, I believe, like a business card on the vehicle, and at that point, honestly, my eyes wouldn't even see it. But I don't, I know that it's going to be tagged, as you said, like as a government vehicle, to know that the money, if you so choose, could go towards a vehicle of yours or the city vehicle, and if it's yours, it wouldn't even have the city logo on it. So personally, I don't see this as being a big deal to remove it, especially under the circumstances that it would make you feel safe and quite possibly keep you safe. So I'm okay with it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other comments? Our new Councilwoman Hudson, would you like to add to the conversation, or was that a negative?
No, I'm just taking it all in, but I definitely agree with all of you guys. I mean, as a woman as well, I know how important my safety is, and so I fully support whatever we can do to make sure we're keeping ourselves safe, so.
I get used to, I'm so used to just seeing Elaine, and now I get used to saying "Councilwoman Hudson."
That's right.
There.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I just want the chief to confirm what I said, that I just wasn't making things up, that I really did have those threats. Do you remember, Chief?
Yeah, some years ago, we looked into it, and we didn't find any information that would lead to the arrest of anyone.
Yes, sir. But the phone call that was left on the answering machine, and then with Black Lives Matter, then when I reported the mailbox being knocked over and the donuts. Yes, sir.
Yes, so, you know, we looked into those situations that the mayor was talking about, and like I said, we didn't have any arrests to make in those situations, but, you know...
They don't leave their name, they just make the threats. Well, thank you, Chief.
Councilwoman Watts?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. And I know we've discussed this before, and we've discussed it in years past, and I know that, you know, I guess the reason, the law, or the, it's a state law, right, that we would be exempting, and just the fact that they allow for the exemption means that they're not that serious about, you know, create a law, then why create a possibility of an exemption? But like Mr. Estes said, I am not the mayor, and I can't relate to how she feels, whether she feels safe or not. And I think the fact that she has something signifying that it is a government car, that, you know, for the transparency folks that are worried about transparency, you know, the car is a government car. It's tagged. So anyway, I appreciate everything the mayor does for the City of Douglasville, serving as mayor, and I definitely want her to feel safe on this particular matter, so.
Thank you, Coach.
Thank you, Coach. Any other comments or discussion? The mayor of the city is in a unique position. You know, on one hand, you are the face of the community, and, you know, as the top elected official, is one thing that you have that's unique, which is that you are elected citywide, and it's not a matter of perception. The important thing is that you are safe, that you kept safe. I mean, if we were a city that was much bigger, you would have a security detail, if, you know, that's what happens when cities grow. So, you know, based on what I see, you know, the sentiment of the city council here, I am perfectly fine with putting this on the consent agenda for Monday unless there's any objections to that. We seem to be doing that, then. Madam Mayor, that is all we have under the Legislative Intergovernment Committee.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and thank you, councilmembers, for your support. I really appreciate you all. So we'll move on to the next committee, which is item number eight, Personnel and Organization Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under Personnel and Organization Committee.
Thank you, sir. Planning and Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We do have two items this evening.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to start this by reminding you guys that kind of like when you travel somewhere that you're not used to going. When I ride in the passenger seat, it's a little different. I don't actually know where I'm going until I actually drive, so bear with me, please.
You have it, you can do this.
But our first item is to hold a public hearing and consider a request for a variance to reduce the 50-foot zoning buffer to zero feet in Section 8.02.2.0C, and to reduce the rear yard setback requirement of 100 feet to 15 feet in Section 5.04B of the Unified Development Ordinance of a lot of 32.57 acres at Bright Star Road and Land Lot 158, District 2, Section 5. Parcel IDs, ooh, those are little, 0158-025-0072 and 0158-025-0073. Application by Native Development Group LLC, care of Joseph McGory, and I do believe Ms. Marissa Jackson is going to help us with this.
Good evening. Marissa Jackson, Planning and Zoning Administrator, 6695 Church Street. The applicant is requesting a two-part variance to reduce the 100-foot minimum setback adjacent to residential to 15 feet and the minimum 50-foot buffer to zero feet. The large setback and buffer are in place to prevent the industrial sites from disrupting residential sites. You'll recall, this was the site of an annexation recently. It required us to leave a strip of residential that's about 50 feet wide there. Due to the small size, it's unlikely that that will ever be actually developed for residential uses, and so that's why the applicant is requesting the variance to help facilitate the industrial development there. It's at the intersection of Bright Star Road and Bright Star Connector.
Thank you very much. At this time, is it appropriate to see if the applicant has anything to add to this? Hi, Mr. Fowler.
Thank you. Morning or evening, everyone. Madam Chairman, members of the council, congratulations, Mayor, and others. May I introduce Joe McGory, who was with us before back in April when this was rezoned, and Michael Forlaw, who is the engineer.
I'm sorry.
32 and 1/2 acres, as you know.
Mr. Fowler, I apologize. Could you please state your name and address for the record? Thank you.
Joe Fowler, Post Office Box 489 Douglasville. Thank you. Rezoned back in April to accomplish the rezoning, a parcel of 15.3 acres was annexed into the city to create that larger 32 and 1/2 acre parcel. You can see that on the diagram before you. In order to annex, because the property to the north was zoned by the county, it's in the county now, it was zoned for two industrial buildings, we had to leave an annexation strip of 50 feet, which is unbuildable because of the setback requirements, but it's there. And that gives rise to the setback requirements in your code for separation from industrial to residential. But the anticipation with that separation would be to protect the residential persons who might live or occupy that property from the industrial. That property is obviously just an annexation strip. The rock quarry is heavy industrial, and it's 50 feet away from this property or from the edge of this building. And so what's requested is that you permit the annexation strip to essentially serve as industrial property. I will note this, that the separation from another industrial property is 15 feet, and there would be no buffer, and in our case, the distance is 75 feet from that property line. So what we have, we believe, is a situation where the annexation strip was only there for the purpose of enabling the city to annex the property. There's no danger of any intrusion on any residential properties, so we asked the council's approval. The buildings were obviously shown to the council at the time of the annexation and rezoning back on April the 17th. Mr. McGory is here along with the engineer, Michael Forlaw, who can answer any further questions about that. Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, did you have anything that you would like to add to this at this time? No? Okay. Well, then, at that time, let's go ahead and hold our public hearing. Guys, please keep in mind those rules that Madam Mayor went over at the beginning of our meeting. Did we have anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this item this Come on down, please. State your name and address for the record.
Barney Young Jr., 7049 Rose Lake Circle. Good evening.
Good evening.
I stand before you today as a concerned resident. Unfortunately, when these warehouses were first proposed, me and all the other Douglas County parents were on spring break. So unfortunately, we weren't here to advocate on behalf of those eight residents whose backyard is going to now be a cargo bay and a parking lot for trucks. So it's not typically, you know, there's a quarry back there that is zoned heavy industrial, and if you do research, you'll see typically there's a 100-to-200-foot buffer between heavy industrial zones that have quarries and other zones. This is changing it to zero. So, I mean, I'm not going to get into, I mean, I used to live in a house where we had to, in College Park, next to the Vulcan plant, where the quarry literally caused like an earthquake every time it happened. It like scared my cat and all that stuff. Right? So it's, there's a lot of seismic activity there, and it's just, I'm sure that buffer was there for a reason. Right? So I just, you know, just a couple of things concern me is just removing that buffer to zero, the setback to 15 feet, and then just basically setting the precedent to bend over backwards to accommodate these warehouses that are going to drastically reduce our quality of life as to anybody who lives on, lives in the area. I deal with tractor trailers every day, and they just cause a lot of traffic. It's going to get worse. So I'm just asking, just, you know, let's advocate on behalf of those residents, let's like, you know, not make it as worse as it's already going to be, and let's, you know, just leave the buffer there. And if anything, you might want to look into increasing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else? Okay. Yes, sir.
Joe Fowler, again. If I can just clarify, the properties on the south where this gentleman resides, there's about a 200-foot buffer in place already. We enlarged what the city's requirement was by an additional buffer. You may recall at the time this was approved back in April. What's being impacted here is property that only adjoins the rock quarry. It's nowhere near this gentleman's house, or where somebody that he may knows lives there, but I will give him a copy of this plot so he can understand that the council already acted to protect those residents. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
I appreciate that.
We'll talk from the audience, please.
Okay. Council, do you guys have any questions at this time? Yes, Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. That's what I was going to confirm with our attorneys, Mr. Dotson, that this was not on that residential portion, it's on the other side.
That's my understanding, but I haven't studied any of the stuff you've got on your computer.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else on that end? Yes, Mr. Estes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like clarification on the 50-foot residential strip. Is that, I mean, obviously, it was required for the annexation. So is there a reason why it is classified residential at this stage?
It could be residential, it could be industrial. The point was, it has to be a county-owned strip that goes along the west edge of this property to connect to the county-owned property, to the county property to the north. Otherwise, had we annexed all the way to the edge of this property, there would have been an island created by the county property.
Okay, so that is still county land, that 50-foot strip?
That 50-foot strip is county.
Okay, okay, that explains it. Thank you.
It's visible on the drawing that you have before you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Looking, I'm looking at the page, and I don't, Ms. Hampton or any of the staff, I'm looking at, well, there is page 22. There's an aerial photograph. It's got a pond. I'm assuming that's part of the rock quarry, and I see an L-shaped piece of property with a property right next to it with a bunch of lines through it. I'm assuming those lines, that's the county 50-foot-wide easement. And so I'm just trying to get perspective here on...
Yes, sir. So the picture that you're looking... Ms. Marie, give us your name and address.
I'm so sorry, Mayor.
It's okay, Director. We know you.
I'm sorry. Shayla Marie, Community Development Director for the city. And in regards to the photo that you're seeing, sorry, just lost it. But in regards to that photo, thank you. Trying to get used to an iPad. So that portion where the pond is, is the rock quarry, and if you're seeing that boundary where the orange portion is, that's where the buffer reduction and setback will go. It won't go to the south portion where you're seeing the smaller lots where the homes are.
Okay. So the L-shaped property is the property we're talking about, correct?
Yes, sir.
And the bottom of the L is where it would be developed?
The bottom of the L won't be touched. It will be within the L shape, but the buffer reduction won't be at the bottom. It would be more so at the shorter portion of the L, at the top, top kind of left corner.
And I'm looking, are those, are those homes along that edge there? I can't tell. Look, I mean, I see parcels that are...
Those are homes.
Those are homes. And so we would go to zero feet back there?
Not in that portion, sir.
Not in that?
The portion where you're seeing the home, that won't be where the reduction will be. It'll be on the north portion where you're seeing the lake with the blue lines.
Okay.
It'd be along that border.
I see.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. I just...
The only reduction will be to the quarry.
Okay. And I'll go ahead and tell you, I'm having a little bit of trouble understanding the map exactly, too. I may have to get you to sit down with me later with a pen and paper or something, but...
One map has turned 90 degrees, that's why it's a little confusing.
Okay. Councilwoman, did you have any questions? Okay.
One thing, I guess, you know, what jumps out is going down to zero feet and going down to 15 feet.
Yes, sir.
And Ms. Fowler did a good job of explaining, but I think a lot of residents would be worried if you look at any kind of large warehouses that are going up around the county and the city, you know, they're pretty big, and so thinking about that, you know, being so close. But the zero feet would be where there were no homes?
No homes and only rock quarry.
So that side of the L closest to the rock quarry?
It is. All of this joins the rock quarry. Could we pull up page three of the staff report? If we can get that on the overhead, the audience would be able to see it as well. And the staff did an excellent job of depicting exactly where the impact is. I don't know if it's possible on the overhead, but if you have it before you...
Well, based on the description and that photo that I was looking at, I got a better idea of, so we're not talking about zero feet on the side of the property where there are homes.
May I come around and just point?
I don't know what the protocol is.
I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
If you can help us understand it, yes, please.
The two buildings are depicted right here. That's rock quarry. Right. This is the annexation, the 50-foot nonbuildable strip. That's zoned residentially in the county. The county doesn't own this property. It's owned by the person who sold this land to Mr. McGory. This is where the reduction is. That building is 75 feet away, which is within the 100-foot setback.
And now...
If this were zoned industrially, there would be zero setback and 50-foot, 50-foot setback and zero long ones.
Where are the residential homes in relation to this?
Nothing.
Okay. So then I think now I'm understanding. I think the map that we were looking at was...
And I would, if there's, if there's any way... And I would, if there's, if there's any way, like, before Monday, I know we'll be discussing this again, if, that's good clarification for me, but not for the citizens that are watching and sitting in the audience. So I don't know how we can, I know where the photo is that Mr. Fowler's talking about, and I looked at that, but I don't think our citizens are seeing it.
Right.
That are interested in this, but I see...
Mr. McGory, did you want to speak on this?
Yes, please. Thanks.
If you could just state your name and address.
Joe McGory, 910 Davis Bend, Alpharetta, Georgia. Thank you again for having us here, Madam Mayor, City Council. We worked with Ms. Reed early on in this process to buffer, provide additional buffer down along those, the residential areas. So we ended up putting an additional 25 feet, just for the reason that the gentleman spoke about, to try and create more. And our buildings are actually 200 feet from the property line is where the building is. But we have a, we have a natural buffer for an additional 25 feet, so we have 75 feet altogether along that neighborhood strip that is Vogue Drive and all those other roads down there. So I just want to make sure that was clear.
Okay.
And really, you know, the 50-foot was already zoned residential when we did it. In fact, that was part of the rezoning we did. We annexed and rezoned that piece into the city. It just happened the residual piece that's left in that 50-foot strip was residential next to M2, and essentially, it's orphaned now, right, that 50-foot strip, because it's not probably developable. So I hope that's helpful. I don't...
I think my next question is for you, then. I was, and you guys may have already stated this, but is, what is the reason for doing this? Is it to make that lot buildable?
It makes it more buildable, and it makes it, really, we, you know, we're trying to keep certain natural lines with our buildings and in certain geometry of the buildings, certain sizing that makes it, you know, a functioning asset. And this is really, you know, these assets are, these buildings are not like the big bombers. These are more shallow bay ones. I think when we had the rezoning, I mentioned my experience, this cycle is that people are not even using any of these dock doors hardly. They're becoming more officed, and it's more, sometimes more smaller trucks or daytime services. So, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if, you know, we've got all these other dock doors on the, on the, on the building. From, from an investment standpoint, the investors want to see the dock doors, but really only functionally, 10% to 15% of them ever get used as they, as we demise the building into different suites. And I would expect this building to be demised into different, four or five different tenants.
Got it. Okay. Well, I've got you there. I think Coach, did you have a question?
So, so basically, my simple mind, y'all are getting closer to the rock quarry, but you're not getting any closer to residents or...
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you, guys, very much.
And then I do have another question for staff, please. Sorry. And that was just simply, by doing this, what if any negative impact could it have on the residential aspect of this?
So because it's not developing near, directly, I guess, impeding upon that boundary, it wouldn't have any major effect. The only effect would be to the quarry, which, in my opinion, it wouldn't have because the uses are the same, so there wouldn't be any effect there. So it wouldn't affect the residential end because the boundaries are being met in the rear portion where the residents will be.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Did we have any more questions on this item?
Has anybody asked if the rock quarry is okay with it?
We haven't had any opposition from the rock quarry.
We don't have to bring up the rock quarry.
Well, with that being said, then, you guys, let's take this item back up on Monday.
Okay. I don't know.
Oh, wait, I need to...
Ms. Cindy, did you have a question? She had her hand raised. I apologize, Madam Chair, I didn't think that you saw her.
I didn't see that. Sorry.
Cindy Welch, 3002 Concord Way. I'm looking at they, what they asked for, to reduce the 50-foot buffer to zero. Now, is that at the rock quarry, so they can go right up to that property line? You don't have any kind of a setback from a property line?
Where do you get the 50-foot? You got the 50-foot barrier that's already there?
The county, huh?
No, the county doesn't own any. I just asked Joe. He was mistaken in what he said.
Unincorporated.
It's in the county, but the county doesn't own it.
But it's, they're up to that, right? Is that right?
Yes, that was my understanding.
Isn't that right, Joe? It's in the county, but the county doesn't own it.
Ms. Welch?
Okay. Well, and then the other one was 100-foot setback, and it's to 15 feet. So is that for the residential property that it's adjacent to? So what kind of a buffer are they going to have?
The way I'm looking at this, it's not going to change the residential side of the buffer at all. It's going to change the side of the buffer only to the rock quarry.
I think it's the simplest way to look at this.
It's going to reduce the rear yard setback.
If you're looking at the property, the north side of the property is already, is against, because it's already an industrial property.
But I...
That's an existing 15-foot setback. That's not changing. The west side of the property is going, is being dropped down to zero setback, which is against the rock quarry.
The rock quarry.
They're not complaining, except that there is a, there is a 50-foot strip between the rock quarry and this property that is in unincorporated Douglas County, but is undevelopable unless you can come up with a series of very tiny houses that you can put in there with a very thin driveway. You're not going to be able to do anything on that 50-foot strip. And then the south side of the property is against the residential neighborhood off of West Road, or whatever that is. That is not changing.
Right.
So that's the simplest way. And then, of course, the east side is against Bright Star Road. Nothing is changing over there. So that, I think that's the simplest way to look at it. The north side, not changing, west side, changing, but it's against the rock quarry. South side residences, but it's not changing.
Okay. And, I mean, we're going to look at this a little bit more between now and Monday. So I'm sure come back and...
Okay. I'm just, you know, those residents deserve to have a buffer instead of having industrial park right in their backyard.
Correct.
They have a buffer.
Correct. But they do, their buffer is not changing. So my suggestion is that we study this a little bit more between now and Monday, and we'll chat about this one again on Monday when we have a little bit more information on it.
Okay. And I like that you're putting the map up for us to see.
I appreciate whoever did that as well. Okay. Thank you, guys.
You only have one opportunity, Mr. Young. No, I said you only have one opportunity. Yes, sir.
Come back Monday and talk to us about it again. It's okay.
Okay. All right, that's all.
Okay. All right, guys, thank you very much. Now, moving on to our next item. And that is to hold a public hearing and consider a request for a variance to reduce the required parking spaces from 980 to 232 in Section 8.01.E of the unified, why can I not say that word tonight, Unified Development Ordinance on a lot of 1601 North River Road and Land Lot 166, District 1, Section 5, parcel ID 0166150010. Application by Microsoft, Microsoft Corporation, care of Michael Trader. And I do believe that Ms. Marissa Jackson is going to talk to us about this one as well. Thank you.
Yes, good evening again. The applicant would like to request a variance to reduce the parking required on the site. Based on the Unified Development Ordinance, 980 parking spaces would be required. The applicant would like to reduce the parking requirement to 232 spaces. The applicant is developing a data center, and these types of uses normally don't require a lot of staff to run them, and they also normally don't require visits from the general public that would require that level of parking. So that's why the applicant is requesting the variance.
Okay. And is the applicant here, and would they like to speak to this?
Yes, the applicant is here.
Thanks, guys. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Aaron Ruffin, Land Development Manager for Microsoft Corporation, 1 Microsoft Way, Redmond, Washington, 98052. Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to present this request for a reduction in our parking requirements as presented by Ms. Jackson. At this time, my colleague Dylan Callahan will come up. He's prepared a brief presentation for you all to walk us through the request this evening.
Thank you. My name is Dylan Callahan, 501 River Street in Greenville, South Carolina. I am with Thomas &amp; Hutton. We are the civil engineer for the Microsoft FTY campus here in Douglasville.
Clicker's not clicking.
Is there... Oh.
Mr. Jenkins?
Okay.
Okay.
So again, the purpose for the variance is to request a reduction in the Unified Development Ordinance requirement for off-street parking. As of right now, the requirement from the UDO would substantially exceed what the owner anticipates for needs for parking based off of facilities that they have in operation elsewhere. This is a vicinity map to show the campus relative to the city of Douglasville. We are on North River Road off of Riverside Parkway, south of the Sweetwater Creek State Park, and this is the FTY campus for Microsoft. Some of the property information, we've already touched on, thank you, Marissa, and this is in the variance application as well. But to reiterate, this is 1601 North River Road. The property is 160 acres, and it is currently zoned LI light industrial. This is an exhibit of the master site plan that is in the variance application as well. There are four buildings for this site titled FTY01, 2, 3, and 4. Each building is 245,000 square feet for a total of 980,000 square feet on site. This site plan was approved by the city of Douglasville in 2021. FTY01 is currently under construction, and it did receive an admin variance for parking in September of 2021 for what we're going to talk about today. I just want to show a couple pictures of the current progress so you can see where the Microsoft is currently at on site. This is the FTY01 building, which is located south of the site. The FTY02, we are currently trying to go for permits and requesting the variance for parking reduction due to that. It will go next to this site where the cars are parked, and then Building 3 and 4 will be in the future, up on the pad in the background. This is just another shot of the FTY01 building. And then this is a shot of the lower pad. You'll see where the contractor has parking and lay down. That's where the FTY02 building will be located. So the UDO, the Unified Development Ordinance, requires one space per 1,000 square foot of GFA, gross floor area, for a data processing facility. That would demand 245 spaces per building or 980 spaces across the site. The ask from the owner is to reduce that to 58 spaces per building or 232 spaces across the site. The full-time employee count per building is expected not to exceed 34 employees, so 58 parking spaces would accommodate employee shifts and any visitors for maintenance or vendors that need to visit the site during operation. This exhibit is also in your variance application package. This shows the current parking layout for FTY02, one of the four buildings. This has 58 spaces, accommodates electrical vehicle charging, and has dedicated green vehicle and carpool spaces. We also meet the ADA requirement for three spaces for 50 to 74 parking spaces. This is part of, again, FTY02, the second building that we're going for permitting. And just to support the loading, we have a couple reference projects from Microsoft. FTY01, again, is in construction. It was an administrative approval back in 2021. It has 58 parking spaces. ATL and CCO are buildings that are located local to other municipalities here in Georgia. They have similar loadings with 57 and 56 parking spaces. Those are in construction. And then the two, the final two, DMS and USC, are outside of the state of Georgia. They have resulting parking loadings similar to what we're requesting. To summarize the impacts without the variance, in order to accommodate the difference of 748 spaces between what the UDO requires us to provide and what the owner needs for operation, we would need to develop an additional 200,000 square feet solely for parking spaces and driveways. That does not include additional for other items such as islands for landscaping or additions to our stormwater management systems with ponds, let alone additional drives to get to this parking area. So in conclusion, we are asking to reduce the one space per 1,000 GFA to a lesser 58 spaces per building to support the owner's needs. This will meet the actual employee count. This will meet the needs of the development based off of their experience elsewhere, and it will allow the site to grow with parking needs as the buildings come online, Building 2, 3, 4, in the future. And this will also reduce the overall impact for impervious areas on the site.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Before we open up the floor, Council, did you guys have any questions? You want to, Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Is your last name Tucker? Are you Mr. Tucker?
Dylan Callahan.
Callahan. Thank you, Mr. Callahan, and your colleague for coming in from Microsoft. I do have a couple of questions. That's a whole lot of, for a variance. So you're saying you only need 58 spaces per building? On slide number nine that we have, it looks like 200-plus cars are, you know, you said that you were in the first phase, and you had a building. There is a building currently there that you're building behind on the side of that building. Those are, where are those cars from?
Those cars, so just to show you, this is the current construction staff. These are not day-to-day operations when the building is in, up and going. This is a number of contractors and subcontractors that are staged on the future second building pad, and this is solely to support temporary construction activities. The final, the final build for the building, even though there are 245,000 square feet,
Yes, sir.
the majority of the buildings, and I'll go back to the site plan that shows the overall. So you can see how these are segmented. The front portion of the building is admin, is only 13,000 square feet. So, you know, 5% of the building approximately, and that is the only portion that will have active employees tending to business throughout the day. The remaining portion for a data processing facility will be primarily to house computers and mechanical systems for cooling.
Okay.
So that's why the footprint to the building relative to parking needs is so large.
I see. So you'll have all of those, like you're saying, the machines or whatever's going on with Microsoft and with the water spraying on the machines to help the data, all of that?
Well, it'll be very heavy air conditioning and computers, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So the extra 7,000 square feet that will not be used up for parking, what is it, are you building, you want to put another building there, or you've already, you are slated for three?
We are, we are poised for four buildings on the site. Again, this was, this is a site plan that was approved and gone through DRI process and everything in 2021. The purpose of showing the impacts without the zoning is to show the magnitude of how much this will, will cost in terms of the development impacts to the building. So 200,000 square feet, not including other options we would have to accommodate to get to it, would essentially mean one of these buildings would be a parking lot. We don't need a parking lot to support it if there's only 34 maximum employees in each building. So we're asking for a variance in order to better suit the site. It's a very mountainous site, so to develop an extra four and a half acres for flat space would be very challenging.
Be expensive, yeah.
Yes.
With the rocks. So you have three additional buildings coming with the one that is currently...
Yes. FTY01 is in construction. That is the, the site photos here. FTY02, so from this, this master plan, FTY01 is the, the south, the further bottom building. And then FTY02 is right next to it, to the north. Then 3 and 4 would be in the future at a later date when Microsoft decides to pursue that. And that would be located on the plan north of the site. And each one of these in the master plan do accommodate for approximately 55 to 60 spaces as it's shown here. So that's, that's what they're expecting for their needs. And again, you know, this is what they anticipate from their other facilities as well, just as...
That you've already had, experiencing, the experience of having built other places, you know what you need to accommodate your parking. So the impervious surface, I wanted to just talk about that for a second. What are you going to do with that extra space? Are you going to make that, is, how's it going to affect the water and then the area?
As it stands right now, we have submitted our stormwater report under an early site works package that accounts for this site plan full impervious as it sits. That is through... That is through DDCWSA, and as we go from building to building, we are amending that LDP with DDCWSA to accommodate the, the additional area that we're going to be, you know, adding buildings. But our stormwater report does account for this impervious area across the site. It does not account for the additional 748 spaces if we don't have this variance, which is where the impacts to additional, you know, site development would, would come into play.
Okay. All right, because it's really, it's near Sweetwater Park, and we're trying to, you know, of course, protect that area naturally. So, thank you so much, Madam Chair. This is all I have.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, Mr. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know that we put a lot of work into the UDO, you know, in the last few years to get it to where it is today. I'm wondering how we came up with 1,000 square feet per parking space on, for data processing centers, simply because, I mean, we've got a lot of data processing centers in the city, and I'm wondering if this is something that we need to look at to, to alter this in the future, because as the gentleman pointed out, there, there really aren't many people working these facilities.
Correct. So the standard for finding the standard, or the, I guess, the average parking, we look into a actual, I guess, a study to look into, see how many parking is standard. Restaurants have a standard parking. So with that, I was just chatting with the city manager. We will look into that to see, because the argument that's being made is that the data center doesn't have that many employees, which is a very true statement. So we need to evaluate to see whether or not that should be a reduction to remove these type of variances, you know, coming before you.
Okay. I mean, the last thing we want is seas of parking, you know, in all over the city like this, and if we can reduce the number of spaces out of simple practicality of design, I think that's worth furthering. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Davis, do you have anything? Thank you. Councilman Esses?
Yes, thank you. I agree with, with Mayor Protam, and I, I want to point out that even with this reduction that is being requested, it's still, you know, pretty close to double the actual spaces that they anticipate needing based on employees. So I, I think this makes perfect sense, but I do agree that, that we should look into it for, for future. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Appreciate that. Thank you. Councilman Burdanley, did you have anything?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Coach.
Ms. Ree, just real quick, so I heard, you know, the, the standard for the UDO, and so is big buildings with lots more employees. So that's, that's why we came up with that number, and we always have the, you know, if we reduce the number down the line, we may run up against a development where that's really needed, and I, I like the, the ability of the council to, to weigh it and take a look at it. You know, I'm not a big proponent of always granting variances and reducing that much, but it, it seems like a no-brainer, plus I'd much rather look at, I'm assuming that what doesn't get developed will be left natural or landscaped, or, and that's more appealing to the eye than blacktop anyway, so.
If I may add something to that, Councilman, the reduction in impervious surface is always something we should look into. A large warehouse is already going to bring in that large number, so if there's not a need for additional impervious, I think it would be a good idea to, you know, avoid that.
That's a perfect point. Thank you, Ms. Ree. That's all I had.
Okay. Thank you very much, and I, I agree with all of you guys as far as, you know, like, do we need to look at this ordinance too, just to know going forward what the impact could be when, because we do seem to have more data centers coming through. I guess, I, I do have a question, though, and that is, what is the lifespan of a data center being there, as in, at what point would they decide they don't want to be there, and then another business possibly wants to come in but can't because there's not enough parking spaces to accommodate?
So the, the lifespan of a data center really depends on the advancements, advances in technology. So as technology changes, things get smaller, then Microsoft always goes back and do a reevaluation of their data center spaces and try to repurpose those, those buildings, because data centers are really in a massive, we're seeing a massive growth in the data center space right now, is, is really unknown exactly what will happen when, you know, technology starts to make, well, when technology starts to, to require the business to make decisions on how to best use their spaces.
And does Microsoft own this building, or are they a tenant?
So right now, we do own the building in partnership with the Development Authority in regards to tax incentives. So when you look at the deed, you will see Douglas County Development Authority listed.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Just one last question. Is, going forward, looking at our UDO, and think, that, that was a great question, I think, by Madam Chair, that when looking at a project like this and considering reducing parking spaces, is there any way to look down the line that, if that day ever came and they decided to repurpose it and they needed more parking spaces, to take that into account when we're approving reductions and?
So if the site allows for there to be vacant or unbuildable space that could later add to the land, should there be the use change? For example, if it goes to a standard processing center or something that a warehouse would be standard for with the structure that is currently built, built as. If there's a vacant structure nearby that they can either purchase or already have access to, they can build on that lot to accommodate the change in use. So it's optional. It just depends on what the site looks like once it changes uses, or what's surrounding or not. So it just depends.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Council, if that was all of our questions, then I believe we need to open this up for our public hearing. So at this time, guys, if you'll please, again, keep in mind Madam Mayor's rules regarding our public hearings, but did we have anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this item? And in Councilman Davis's words, well, if we have no takers, we're going to go ahead and close this hearing, and we will take this item up on Monday. Thank you, guys. Madam Mayor, that is all that we had for this committee.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. The training wheels are off. You did a wonderful, you know, you've done a wonderful job. You just have to read these numbers like it's addresses with real estate, and you're selling a home. Okay, we'll move on then to the next committee, which is Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller as well.
Madam Mayor, thank you so much. We have no business this evening for public improvement and beautification.
Thank you, ma'am. Public Relations Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
No business.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under public safety tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business inside Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Thank you, Coach. Technology Committee chaired by new councilmember, yay, Elena Hudson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no new business under Technology Committee.
Thank you, ma'am. Transportation Committee chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under Transportation tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other business this evening from the elected officials? Any councilmembers? Yes, sir, Councilman Esses?
I just want to take a second to officially welcome Councilwoman Hudson to the, to the team up here. We are all very excited to have you join us, and we look forward to working with you. That's all. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. Welcome. Here, here, we're all doing cartwheels on the inside. We appreciate you being here. I wanted to just acknowledge the chief, and I know, is there graduation this Saturday? Chief, I'll wait till I come to you to talk about the graduation. Yes, sir. So any other business from councilmembers? We don't have any outside of welcoming Councilmember Hudson. Updates from city staff, our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson.
No business, madam.
Thank you, Colonel Dotson. Our staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan. Hey, Ms. Miranda? Fine, thanks. Thank you, ma'am. Chief of Police, thank you, Chief, for Youth Against Violence. My daughter came two weeks in a row. She enjoyed it. I think she learned something. Thank you for letting her do some community service. I think you have graduation coming up this Saturday.
Yes, we have graduation Saturday, so if you want to come by, and we'll have Monique Rivard, she'll be speaking, and, you know, come and have a meal with the young people, and just spend a few hours with the young people, and just in keeping and encouraging them.
Yes, sir.
What time is that, Chief?
Uh, we start at 10:00, but we'll start lunch about 12:00. Come on by, we're gonna have some good food and have a talent show, and so we'll make it fun.
Yes, sir.
Do you juggle, or what do you do?
No, it's not him. It's the students.
You're not on the talent?
It's the students. It's the students.
I'm the juggle.
You're the juggle. No more fireworks, Chief. Thank you. Okay. You don't have anything else, Chief?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Good to see you. I'm our city manager, Ms. Hampton. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you all. So, excuse me, I guess it's just the weather outside. Just to, again, welcome Councilwoman Hudson on board, and just to remind you all about a busy January. So you do have your Monday meeting, but you also have a Thursday meeting next week as well, and then we do have the MLK holiday that Tuesdays, or that Monday, I should say, so your meeting is on Tuesday. And then, again, a reminder, you have Cities United, but the following week, we have our planning workshop, which will be at GMA. We will give you an email from Kristin on instructions for those who will be carpooling, and a reminder that that was moved to a Wednesday and a Thursday. We're going to try to get you guys out of Atlanta fairly early to get back here for dinner, so you can go directly into your legislative work session. We won't have committee meetings on the first to allow for time for you all to break. The other, Miranda reminded me that Councilwoman Miller, as the Planning and Development Committee Chair, primarily because you deal with public hearings most, more often, that your code allows for 20 minutes for public hearings for the entirety. It doesn't, it's not including the presentation, but that 20 minutes is 10 minutes for and 10 minutes against. You, as the committee chair, have the ability to relax that if you so choose. I would just encourage you that if you do choose to relax it, that we stay consistent. But your ordinance does allow for 20 minutes for the entirety, so that's 10 minutes for and 10 minutes against, not inclusive of the initial presentation. But that is all that I have, unless you all have any questions. Thank you again. Happy New Year.
City manager, are, are, not retreat, our work session, or with Mara Shaw from GMA?
Yes, ma'am. She should be calling you all. If you haven't gotten a phone call from her as of yet, I have sent her over the preliminary agenda. Staff is working on your presentations. We have a lot of information to cover, and again, on the last day of the retreat, we are, should say, planning session, we will relegate to items that you all have brought forth to us. There's still time to submit some information to us if you're interested, so we can do research. We do have an ethics training starting on that first day during lunch for y'all to take advantage of. Well, we'll have, of course, our financial information. The only thing that we won't bring forth this year, if you're, if you're going to be wondering, is a presentation from your chief for public safety. Love the chief, not trying to kick him out, but we had so much information, and the chief always does a good job every year keeping you all up to date, and we just recently had a presentation from his department, but one of your first quarterly reports from departments in February will be the police department. So we thought it would be easier to do it that way versus crowding the meeting and not giving you time to really hear about some things that we need some decisions from you all on upcoming in 2024.
Yes, ma'am. The city manager, just for public information, we did expand the time where the RFPs were due for the town green. They were January 2nd, I think. Now, if you can tell us the dates where this been extended to any vendors who want to apply?
Yes, ma'am. We do have two RFPs out related to downtown. One is for a hotel. The other is for the private portion of the town green development. If you all recall, we did receive notice from Novair that they were no longer seeking an opportunity to work with us, so we have an active RFP out that closes at the end of the month, January 31st. So we will give you, we should have an update at least on how many individuals have proposed by the time we get to that meeting. If we don't get anyone who bids, we will pull it and just hold for a while. We do know that the financial and economic conditions and climates have significantly changed, including when it comes to lending, so our proposals will, you know, potentially depend upon that, but we will keep you posted.
Thank you so much, city manager. We appreciate you. You are a plethora of information always. Now we have comments from citizens and delegates. If you sustain the meeting and you'd like to come forward, please come to the podium and give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to talk to us about any business.
Cindy Welch, 3002 Concord Way. I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
When there is a car accident and there's parts of the car on the road, who is to pick those up?
I guess it depends. Mr. Roberts?
Because there, there's been a couple, like, somebody's front bumper on Douglas Boulevard, and, I mean, and it's like, okay, it's been there for like three weeks. So I haven't noticed this week if it was gone, but, you know, I'm thinking, who's supposed to pick them up? But it does make sense that the people that come and tow cars would take those, but they're not doing it, so you might want to.
So if not, we do have that lined that we, Mr. Greg, what is our, our technology, whatever? You can go online and report something.
On the website.
Yes, sir.
There's a citizen engagement.
Okay.
It's pretty easy to link up to it. The thing, call City Hall 9203000, they'll get it to us.
Yes, sir.
Or 7709203005. We'll get it checked out. I'm not sure. Douglas Boulevard is about a three-mile stretch, so I don't know.
I know. I'm sorry.
Ms. Welch says it's gone now, but just in the future for citizens, if they have any concerns, you can, either Public Works or Public Safety, and we'll make certain, right, Chief? Okay?
I also have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Or a question. When are you going to get that driveway fix coming out of Coles? The other day, I'm sitting in my neighborhood, and four cars came to make left turns, and I sat there, my car was partly onto Stuart Mill Road, and I flashed my lights, and I honked my horn, and I pointed. All four of them finally decided if they pulled out, they were going to hit me, so maybe they should turn right. But it's like, it's, something has to be done before somebody really does get hurt. You know, when, when they made that, they didn't make that as long as it used to be, and it's, people just drive over it. It's not tall enough.
Yes, ma'am.
It's currently with engineering. Yeah, so it's being engineered.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll try to be nice this year.
You're nice. It's okay. You didn't get cold in a stocking. Yes, ma'am. Any other comments from citizens and delegates? Happy New Year, Mr. Harris. Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm coming up here to address y'all today.
Give us your information. I know you.
My name is Kelvin Harris. I stay 6637 Copper Court, Douglasville, Georgia, 30134.
Yes, sir.
The second address is 3176 Pope Road, Douglasville, Georgia, 30135.
Yes, sir.
I'm coming to address y'all today to file exempt, address 6637 Copper Court, Douglasville, Georgia, 30134. This issue goes way back for 2019, up until now. I don't mind any city orders. I don't mind doing what I have to do that's right, that I'm getting service for. From 2019 up until 2023, I'm charged for citation, sanitation, and I, they have never picked up no trash there. I did an open record request for all emails, all the information concerning that address. The emails got a little sloppy. The director went back to WSA trying to get information, water. I'm not complaining about my walk. I'm complaining about trash that have not been picked up at 6637 Copper Court. We got videos, we got Dobell rings. They don't pick up trash there. 65-gallon can is $19.50. That's $234 a year. A 90-gallon can is $22.50. That's $270 a year. Now, I can't say that me and Mr. Greg went back and forth for a minute, okay? But what I'm saying is, that's wrong. If you're not picking up trash, you charging me for trash. That's why I'm coming to y'all to be asking for exempt, because I don't want to go and make a little mess, because I got the emails. But one email disturbed me, really disturbed me. But one email disturbed me, really disturbed me. This email was sent February 7, 2020. You can see where they blacked it out, okay? But when you do an open record request, you got to know how to do it. It's people like him that really expose our current facility, expose. Take that person. That's not professional. I just reached out because I presented paperwork and everything, letting them know that it wasn't no trash being picked up. They cannot tell you today what trash they pick up. They depend on WSA because they send the bill over to them. I'm asking this membership in this panel to exempt me. They don't pick up trash at my house. That's wrong. I'm coming to y'all on good faith before I take legal action. That's still it. They do not pick up trash at 6637 Copper Court, Douglasville, Georgia, 30134. I don't want to get it messed. I got a stack of paperwork. So I just want y'all to take that into consideration and get exempt, 6637 Copper Court, for sanitation. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Harris. We'll look into it. And the bills are connected with WSA. The sanitation bill for all city residents is connected with the Water and Sewer Authority. So that's kind of like our checks and balances for our bills. And we'll look into the situation from 2019 to 2013 to see what we can do and look for if an exemption is a possibility, and we apologize.
I have to ask y'all for this. I'm ready.
Yes, sir.
Like I said, I was prepared for one year. I will.
Yes, sir.
I'm just saying, it's no track being, no trash is being picked up from that address.
Yes, sir.
But what I'm saying, I also say I can be, I can ask for y'all to exempt. It's not being picked up. If it was being picked up, I wouldn't have a problem with paying.
Yes, sir. We're looking into it.
Time of day now, $234 a year. You pick up a little trash, what am I paying? You're leaving a garbage can in my...
Yes, sir.
$270 if you leave a 90-gallon can.
Yes, sir. That's, I know, you'd come to the microphone. We're fine, Mr. Harris. Thank you.
You know what I'm saying? I don't have a problem. They not picking up trash. You see what I'm saying? So that's why I say I must come to y'all for, ask to be exempt. They say 65 and over, but I still can come ask for that. I'm just saying, look at the situation, look at the proof. Y'all, I hope y'all got a copy of all the emails and the paperwork I just sent.
Yes.
My water bill, I don't even do 1,000 gallons. The meter is 90, 60, 300, 900. You know what I'm saying? I'm just saying, I don't mind paying for the service that I'm getting, but I don't feel like it's fair for me to pay for service that I'm not getting.
Yes, sir.
That's still it. That's taken from me.
Yes, sir. We apologize if there's been a misunderstanding. We'll make certain we get it taken care of. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Yes, sir. Any other comments from citizens and delegates? Okay, if we don't have anything else, any other business tonight, then this meeting is adjourned.